We're going to call our steps in between serving calls. That is correct.
Dear Henry, Father, we thank you for this day. It keeps getting us. We have to keep put a hedge protection around the city of Clay and our grounded communities. We have to keep protect our citizens. Keep it safe. Bring many of them across if you can. We have to keep bless us, keep us. We have to keep put a hedge protection around us and if we do, you plan to keep having us today. The light and our maybe we have to pure will be done in everything that we said and did. And if you get the praise in the Lord, it's all that we did. And we have to be in Jesus' name. Thank you. This man will say.
My congratulations to the land of United States of America. And to the Republic, where it stands one nation, armed and with its whole liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Nail?
Here.
Dr. Rush?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mayor West?
Here.
You have a form.
Are there kind of like the regular September 6th?
So, what is my name?
Second.
I'm voting second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Second, here, the committee gives the meeting again.
Oh, move the man.
There's a couple of things on here that we're going to mark off. Uh, under public hearing. Uh, three thirty ninety eight Valhalla Avenue. And three four oh five Valhalla Avenue. And sixty nine oh one. That's had circles, those have been cut. So those, we can take those off there. So, I can say motion two, the committee, and amended, uh, again.
Motion no peripatric amendment, I think, that's second.
I'm voting second, I wrote, I'm kind of on voiceover. All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion two, the committee, consent again.
Oh, move the man.
Second.
And motion second, I wrote call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
Next.
We'll move to City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, all of you have the budget worksheet for, uh, the twenty five twenty six budget. You'll see that it is, um, barely changed from, um, from last year's budget. Uh, the utilities are highlighted because of the, uh, increase in utilities. Uh, employed health insurance went up four point seven five percent, uh, in this year. And, uh, the donations to the films are highlighted in yellow. Those stayed, uh, flat with, with last year. So we have a, a flat budget. When I gave was a balanced budget, uh, at six million and sixty dollars. I think everyone has called and when you discussed and talked about the budget. If you had any questions, first of all, and if you have any, uh, say anything. That's all I have left, maybe. Off the budget. Motion.
You don't tonight? You don't say it tonight or next, or next day?
This is the last meeting.
You will make a motion that goes after the, which has been reported by the City Manager, what's on?
So.
I'm voting second, I wrote call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
She knows.
Uh, then we'll go to public hearing, we have ALC twenty five dash zero six. We're on seat.
Mayor, the applicant is here, if there are any questions from the council. Uh, y'all have discussed this with the initial, uh, applications. This is the one that will be in the suite, uh, a couple of doors down from, uh, office house. Uh, under the same roof as office house, which is created the addressing issue. But ABC has accepted his war plan. And, um, all of the departments of the city have, uh, initial approval. Uh, the public safety issues that you saw were all dealt with in Tuscaloosa County. So, um, from the staff perspective, this is recommended for. That?
Going to hear from the, um?
Yeah, these, like, exactly. You're on that side.
Are there any questions that I didn't address first?
First, let me tell what you want to do. You know, and this is what you want to address.
Yes, sir, uh, I have plans and made plans to open a package store next to office house. I believe this will be beneficial for the city because that will create next, uh, an extra revenue stream for the city. And along with providing another location on the opposite side of the city away from all these other package stores. Are there any questions in the audience that I might answer? Yes, ma'am.
I was under the impression that they're also.
Exactly.
They don't do public question. You have to fill out the form.
Are there any questions with the council I might answer?
When are we, uh, what are, what are you thinking about opening?
I'm trying to be open by October eighteenth.
What are the operation hours?
Operation hours are going to be from two P M. to ten P M. Monday through Friday and then Saturday from two P M. to midnight.
Have those been launched for any form?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Anyone here to speak against the, um, ALC twenty twenty five dash zero six? I can add that now.
Well, was that the one about the, the new liquor store?
Yes.
Well, I think we're all against it. Go ahead.
We don't need to know.
We, no, we don't, I don't care what side.
We're going to have order. Can you come up here?
What, because we are saying things?
Hang on a minute.
I'm Deanna Hunt, I live at fifty seven forty eight De Soto Drive here in Vincent. I've been here for thirty five years and I've played this game before with, up here. And, and you can't speak, it's not free speech unless you fill out the form. And did we ever even hear about all these liquor stores popping up? Oh, wait, wait, wait a minute, you have to come to the meeting.
We have a, we have a moratorium in the city of Clay. And this is past several years ago, that we can allow more liquor stores in the city of Clay.
I thought the moratorium was just on the nail salon.
This is, no.
Oh, and the check cashing places.
This is the, I just speak. I'm trying to point to.
In here.
We have a moratorium. This is the fourth liquor store. There will be no more liquor stores in Clay, just like the moratorium on check cashing places. Uh, uh, massage parlors, all that, we have moratoriums on all that, we got a moratorium on the.
Okay, I understand.
If we deny this, we end up being sued and we end up having liquor.
Because of the moratorium?
That's all.
Okay, I get that. So because of the locality toward the school. And the church, and the church, I mean, the daycare right next door and everything.
Lots is given in that building, free.
Okay, so it doesn't matter about what's there now, what's in the area.
The church was there at that time.
Okay.
I had many lots in there, but we cannot repeat.
Okay, so, but you said that hours on Saturday would close at what, twelve on Saturday night? That's not necessary. Eight o'clock needs to close, I would think so, right? Okay, thanks, guys.
Anyone else opposed? I'll take that as a no.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve ALC twenty twenty five dash zero six, by the way, it is discussed. My motion's out there. Yeah, my motion is to approve twenty twenty five dash zero six, it is discussed. And since I still have the floor and live on that end of town with all spring and clothes. If you want to buy something, you got to go all the way around like you do now to the three over here. There's not one beyond the road closure. Current. So that's strategic base. And with the Dollar General closed, frankly, the city could use the revenue on the sales day. Because we don't know where Dollar General, whatever. Hopefully, nobody else burns another bill.
I hear you, real.
It'll be us. It won't be this year.
It was in the.
I have a motion on the floor. Yeah, I'm second.
I'll say it.
Our motion is second, I wrote call.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yeah.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Mayor West?
Yes.
Motion passes forward to.
Next on our public hearing is ALC dash twenty five, they go seven.
Mayor, this is another package store and, um, I don't think anyone understands why. But ABC makes new owners that you know there's not a change in address, just simply a change in owner. Go through the entire process of, uh, changing the name. So, um, this is, this is the one that's known as Chelsea Blues. It's the, uh, not that's going to get up. Yeah, it's fascinating. Uh, so Kevin came and spoke to y'all several times before he opened it. ABC has cruised it and this is a change in ownership of, uh, Kevin just sold to another person. And, um, all of the, all the backroom checks and, uh, all the financials is approved by ABC. And the city staff has approved the location, obviously. Public safety and, uh, the financials. So the staff recommends approval for the name change, uh, at twenty one forty three Sweet Hollow.
This is just for the liquor store?
Yes, ma'am.
Not Kevin's store?
Right, there's, there's, yeah, there's no change in ownership of the property.
Kevin, you.
There he is, came in like. And the new owner was out.
Now, come on up and, come on up.
Let the folks reach on up, okay?
Can introduce your new owner.
I would never want to know. Okay, my name is Kevin, uh, I guess, uh, South Africa. And the discipline, uh, is the new hospital, uh, as far as. So I didn't expect, but if there are any questions.
That's okay, thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone to speak?
Philip, student of mine, Philip Lagat, here's the, uh, here's the new owner, uh, of that portion, Kevin's father. Anybody else have any questions?
Anything you can try to do now?
Uh, no, ma'am, my name is Philip Lagat, so take over from this guy, uh, I'm going to take care of the place. And make sure that we do the right thing. We'll change it, I think, I think the same.
Anyone else? Anyone? You can, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Anyone against? I know in a tiny motion, I'm cancel.
May I make the motion that we change, fill with the changes that are critical for, from the city manager?
Second.
I'm voting second, we have roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
She knows.
We'll move on to another second reading. Uh, we got fifty nine oh two Elizabeth Drive and, uh, sixty five eleven South Lane and sixty five twelve South Lane. Uh, is there anyone here that they, for instance, that have, yes?
Yes, I live at sixty five. Yes, my name is Mark Misska, I live at sixty five twelve South Lane. Um, first of all, I'd like to say that this, what I deem as almost harassment is three years ago, I had a knee replacement operation. So some, a, a neighbor reported me. Um, this is continued, I mean, I, I was even reported for having a pile of wood in my driveway. With some plastic lattice that I plan to use. And that was reported as inoperable equipment. So obviously, it's somebody, to me, that they've taken it personal. I cleaned up what I deemed was the problem. Um, I was told that that, it would, that would be enough. I contacted Town Hall twice. To get a, to talk to somebody about exactly what the problem is and what I needed to clean up. I have, uh, over an acre of land that I'm trying, I had a, a son who was helping me. After, I'm just starting to, believe it or not, I'm just starting to get back my energy and everything from the knee replacement. But he's not helping me anymore, so I'm taking it all over. And I would have liked to have talked to the inspector to find out exactly what the problem was. But I got, I called Town Hall twice and got no return call. And after three years, I feel that this is a personal thing with the, with the anonymous person. That's been complaining about it. Um, why couldn't, why don't they just stop by and say, hey, I, I don't like this or that, it doesn't look good. Instead of wasting town resources on something so, so picky you. You know, it's.
Mr. Miss, I, I've been to your property twice, evidently, I spoke to your son and I know I've never spoken to you. On the pile of garbage, the old, uh, glass work and rotten wood. And told him if he wanted to save the lattice, he could move it behind and lean it against the garage, which was done.
Right.
But the old oil barrels, the old rolled up fence, the, uh, skid steer that doesn't work. That's got hard to land everywhere.
Skid, skid, that's the stick, I don't understand, skid steer.
Uh, box there.
That's not on my property, so you're thinking of another property. And, and I think that's still, I think that's still on that property, that's further up the street.
We, yeah, we still have that, but you have, uh, did you have, uh, gardens with the, with the rolled up fences with the leaves growing there? Uh, behind where the lattice work and the garage works?
No, that, that, there's no rolled up fence back there now anymore, that's, that's why I really wanted to talk to somebody about what was the problem. Why doesn't somebody, instead of wasting town resources on this, why doesn't somebody just knock on my door and say?
To somebody at that address once.
Okay, nobody told me about that at all. That's my, that's my son who's become kind of uncooperative. That's, that's, that's a personal matter, but nobody addressed me.
Well, because you're the property owner.
Yes.
And the complaint that comes in, uh, we're required by law to write the property owner.
Oh, I understand that.
Okay.
But it's still, and the other thing is, I don't agree about an anon, quote unquote, anonymous complaint. I mean, in this country, you're, you're allowed to confront your accuser and I believe that this anonymous complaint person. Is using the town as a means of harassment of, of people they don't like, like I, my backyard, I garden a lot. And my backyard has a high water table. So this year, I had a plant corn in my front yard, which I imagine they didn't like. But that's within my right and it was, it was, um, neat and everything else. And I'm working on my front yard, if you've been by there, you can see I'm making a raised bed. And like I said, I'm working on this because my son isn't working on it anymore for me and.
All, all we're going to do, we're going to take that one off and we're going to check it out.
Yeah, and, and stop by and show me what the problem is and I'll correct it, but it's, you know what I mean? Again, I feel like this anonymous complaint.
Do you have any idea how many times hundreds been by there?
Good one.
Okay, so we've made three visits to your property. I personally have talked to someone there twice. Uh, so it's not like they're just giving letters and, and being harassed, we're trying to get the answers.
Right, well, well, again, nobody.
It's you, I'll come back and talk to you.
And I, and I did call the town twice.
Yes, sir.
And, and I never got a return phone call.
Well, that's because we came out there.
Again, but you didn't be, when he came out, he should have addressed me.
Do you own that property?
Pardon?
Do you own the property?
Yes, sir, I own it as I lived there.
Okay.
All right, we'll check it out.
I'll come by, I'll come by and talk to you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, we'll go with, uh, and those are under unanimous consent, so we'll move on to, uh. If there's no one else to speak on sixty five eleven South Lane or fifty nine oh two Elizabeth Drive. All right. We'll move on to personal property by seventy one twelve South Lane. All right. We'll end up with that public hearing. We'll see nobody's. That's right. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to maybe being unanimous.
Somebody, mayor?
Second.
Our motion is second, I wrote call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
Next.
This moves us to ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero seven.
I'm going to announce it. Uh, twenty twenty five oh seven is an ordinance rescinding ordinance since twenty fourteen oh four and twenty fifteen nineteen. Uh, which is the city of Clay five mil Admoral Act. And, uh, Mayor Wester is going to introduce the resolution. Ordinance on that.
Uh, and explain this a little bit, uh, now there's a, uh, definite fact, though, because I don't read facts that much anymore. Uh, but what we're going to do is, uh, this, uh, five mil property tax was put into effect. Uh, actually, I mean, Ricky Baker is on city council in two thousand fourteen. Uh, he wanted to start her own police force, which after doing the research on a police force. It was going to cost us about four times what this property tax would cover. Which the property taxes are over, uh, a half a million dollars. So we actually, uh, put that property tax in the general fund, which we never designated it for anything else. Uh, in the last couple of years, we've had issues with garbage pickup going up and up. A lot of complaints about people saying, you know, why don't y'all get contracts, why don't y'all negotiate contracts? We do that, we try to give you the lowest price on garbage pickup possible. Uh, I had an approach about several citizens about giving some help on garbage pickup. Uh, I talked to Ronnie about, uh, just taking that five mil property tax and paying it on the total garbage bill. So it would reduce your garbage bill a little bit, it wouldn't take terribly, but it would take a hundred, maybe two hundred dollars off your garbage bill for the whole year. Uh, after looking into it, we can't do that because not everybody in the city of Clay has garbage pickup. So you can't, you know, do anything for some citizens and not do it for everybody. So the best way to do this is just to rescind that property tax. So next year, that five mil property tax will come off of your property. So you will not have to pay that five mil property tax anymore. So that hundred and fifty dollars or two hundred dollars, however that works out with your property, a five mil property tax. Usually works about fifty dollars per hundred thousand on your home. Usually works about fifty dollars per hundred thousand on your home. So if you have a house that's worth three hundred thousand dollars, you should see about a hundred and fifty dollars come off your property tax. So the reason to do this is, is to help each every citizen in Clay with your garbage pickup. So you will be adjusted on your property tax. You will not be paying that five mil property tax anymore. As far as budget goes, we've looked over the budget. It's not gonna affect our budget hardly at all. Uh, with the increase of sales tax and stuff that we've gotten to see the plan, which we well covered that amount of money. So instead of giving that money to the garbage service, we're just gonna rescind that property tax, which will help every citizen in Clay. It'll reduce your, you will not have property tax in Clay anymore. Like TracOne, other cities, uh, I thought about introducing a property tax for everybody to vote on. If you do a mil, a thirty mil property tax or something in that effect to cover the cost of garbage. It has to be put before the citizens for a vote. So you would have to vote. So, you know, maybe later down the road, we might want to introduce a property tax to cover garbage pickup like a lot of cities do. But at this point in time, I think it's the best thing for us to do is to help every citizen to reduce that property tax. And to, to take off that five mil property tax. So I wanted to explain a little bit about that before, uh, we're doing things.
I have a comment on this.
Right, we're, I, like, we're on.
Lady, lady, I have a name.
Here, we're on unanimous consent.
Okay, but I don't feel that the council should be voting on this right now when the community has not had a chance to even know what's going on before you're voting on it.
The council voted on this property tax. I have to be asked them to put it in place.
The community has no idea. Woo, the community has no idea what you're voting on tonight. To vote on the five mil now? Well, you should. We have to.
We voted on this. The city council voted this property tax in. We can vote to rescind. That's all it takes.
But it says about school and that.
The city does not have, the city, the city council can vote on rescinding this property tax.
No, I'm just trying to get clarification. Is it about, you said, you were talking about garbage pickup and garbage. I'm saying that it's, it's about school support of the school.
I explained to you what's going on. I told you what the property tax was.
Well, I'm just reading the ordinance. I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. Ordinance twenty twenty five, yes, you will say.
Mayor is the one who pays this garbage pickup every month, every quarter. And if the person about to retire from their day job in a year, I could use an extra couple of hundred dollars in my gift pocket. And if we're not using this money for anything specific, and we realize that our own police department would run over two to three million dollars a year. The money's been there for over eleven years. And every year we collect this money without a tag for it. So that being said, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero seven.
I'll say it. I have a motion second. Our roll call.
Any questions about this? Okay, can we have questions about this, Mayor?
I'm looking at the order.
So my understanding, Mayor, is that this, uh, was originally put in place around circa twenty fourteen. Originally put together for schools and public safety. And then we found out we didn't have enough money for public safety. Right, we didn't have enough money for all our schools. So, and I understand that we moved that money forward where we voted, where we used that in general fund or general, general city. Is the, I realize it's only half a million dollars. And I realize the city has a financial place. Uh, did we see, uh, in the budget where, uh, we can sort this?
I see. I know we've got, I know we've got a very ugly right now, so I just want to make. We haven't used this money. Right, okay. So we've not allocated any of this money.
And if. Mayor, I want to make sure that, because I know that you're, something that you're saying that's not correct. Since we have used this money over the last sprinting year, it goes into the general fund. And that's money that has been given to schools, developing parks, building a library, building football courts. Everything that's been done, uh, that money has funded the general fund. It did not fund the police department or the school system. Because the, uh, surveys that y'all paid to do. Said that there was not enough money in the community to fund a twenty seven million dollar per year school system. And a four million dollar per year police department.
And that's what I meant was that money was not used for a police department or to start on this. So we used it and it, there's enough money in the hands of that company.
So let's make it a strike. Let's make it a strike. We're rescinding this and giving this money back to the city.
Just like we did our. Just like we did, we rescinded the two cents sales title on road.
We're gonna have to spend half a million left if we rescind it.
Y'all, first again, I got a deck to here, which can help you outside. I'm not gonna play that. I'm not gonna put it.
Probably essential. They're talking about you. They're talking on yourself. I can hear you and I don't hear real well. But y'all listen to what they're saying.
Trying to help you and you don't help. I don't understand. I don't understand.
I'm gonna turn your motion. We have a motion in six on the floor. I'm gonna make a vote. Roll call.
Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Kurtland?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
Remove your resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty six.
Resolution twenty twenty five thirty six is a resolution authorizing the elimination of a nuisance upon private property. At the following addresses, fifty nine oh two Elizabeth Drive, sixty five eleven South Lane, sixty five twelve South Lane. And, uh. What, okay. Uh, so you want to remove sixty five?
I have a question. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty six, with the removal of sixty five twelve South Lane.
Remove, Mayor.
Second.
Our motion second, our roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtland?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
This moves us to twenty twenty five dash thirty seven.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty seven is a resolution authorizing the elimination of a nuisance upon private property seventy one twelve South Lane.
I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty seven.
Remove it, Mayor.
Second. Our motion second, our roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Kurtland?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
Next.
This moves us to resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty eight.
Resolution twenty twenty five thirty eight, a resolution declaring weeds to be a public nuisance. Seventy six sixty four Whitey Road, sixty four eighty two Chrissy Drive.
Yeah, the motion that we take, resolution twenty twenty five thirty eight.
Our motion second, our roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
Yes.
Remove your resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty nine.
Resolution twenty twenty five thirty nine is a resolution declaring personal property to be a public nuisance. The address is five sixty one.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty nine, as described.
Second. Our motion second, our roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Kurtland?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yeah.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
Next.
Move to resolution twenty twenty five dash forty.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash forty is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Advanced Sign and Lighting Company. The mayor wanted to speak about this resolution.
Uh, we've actually promised the middle school parade, digital sign for several years. Uh, we actually had a sign here that we took out and was gonna use it there, but. Uh, evidently that sign's not working in good shape. So we're actually gonna put a new sign at the. Elbury, at the middle school. And at the Clay Elbury School. And it's a lot of, uh, because they need, they put more signs out that. You know, show the answer stuff. So we're gonna put a digital sign in front of the library so they can have that to show the answer they have. Or come to their computer and say. They're on the digital sign.
Mayor, I like the fact that we're doing it for all four schools in the city of Clay, even though they're county schools. We're covering all four.
And if you, if you don't know, uh, the sign in some Deerfoot Parkway. Was actually the sign and the material was bought by Jefferson County. But me and Ronnie and my class at Tocqueville actually did the stone work on that job. That we saved the county about fifteen thousand dollars on that sign.
And it's still standing nicely.
And that's gonna, that's actually gonna be the plan at the middle school also. Uh, the sign company's gonna put the sign up at the middle school. Uh, I'm gonna take my class and we're gonna actually probably put that sign into Maxi City. Uh, the one in Del Rio School, there's already a base to that sign and. That had to be torn down and redone completely. So we're actually just gonna put a electronic sign on that pole. Uh, the one at the library, uh, can probably be stoned to match the stone at the library. From the library, to match it. Just to give y'all a. That they don't want to, it has been, uh, I know Mr. Wilson, I did call Mr. Science about four years. It's why it's just his sign. Our motion to approve twenty twenty five dash forty.
Second.
Our motion second, our roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Kurtland?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yeah.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
This moves us to resolution twenty twenty five dash forty one.
Mayor, twenty twenty five forty one is a resolution establishing a library committee. Uh, the, uh, members of that committee will be Dr. Karen Delon, uh, for a four-year term. Dr. Joe Nata Terry for a three-year term, Miss Pat Hamilton for a two-year term, and Miss Cindy Godwin for a one-year term. And, uh, Dr. Rush, we need to, uh, introduce this resolution.
Yes, I think it is time that we have some consistency, though we have feeling with the library. And what better way to have that is having educators, former educators, former great educators, um, being a part of that. So I do, um, think this is gonna be something good for the city to get some consistency with the library and what we need to offer within the city. Um, and I think this will be the right path to do. I know this was something that the city has wanted to seek. And I am gonna be helping and supporting and being that liaison as a educator myself to make sure that the public library have all the assets that they need.
Thank you for doing that talk to me.
Could I ask a question about that? I would tell that form, this question to.
At the end, that.
That'll be public comment.
Public comments, please. I'll entertain a motion to approve twenty twenty five dash forty one.
Okay. Second.
Our motion is second, our roll call.
Uh, got a couple of questions about this as well. Maybe if Dr. Rush would be useful, man. Uh, so a couple of, a couple of questions. I know right now we're moving from the Alabama Library. And I know we're part of the ACLC. Uh, so will this, will this affect in any way our contract that we have with the ACLC, the, I think, advisory committee? Uh, they will actually come to y'all with any change they need. They'll come to the council to. If Dr. Rush, you'll be the one to bring it to y'all. And if they need something, you can feel, thank you. So, they have a second question on it. Is, is, does this affect the city's final decision to guard in the library? Uh, or will library committee bring subject and go into the city council, the city council will book it. So the city does still have time. And does opening this committee give anyone access within the community to city funds?
Well, they don't have access to them, they actually just like they.
They're regular votes, they're, they're requests that are monitored by us.
Mayor, can I answer any questions? Dr. Rush, the license, the license that you stand, she's still here.
No, we did have our four members here that want to pay with obvious.
So these are things with the names you ran.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash forty one.
Motion to approve, Mayor, and explain briefly. You guys have a lot of questions.
Our roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Since I do know a couple of these ladies and I'm very proud to have them on the library board, library committee, um, yes.
Mr. Kurtland?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yeah.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
This moves us back to winning, uh, twenty twenty five dash forty six.
Uh, Mayor, the next several, uh, where we have cut the grass over the summer, and so it will be a baitment. Uh, the first one is at fifty three hundred Baggage Drive. And there will be a baitment, a weed in an amount of two hundred and thirty eight dollars and seventy five cents placed on that property.
Next, I'd like to approve twenty twenty five dash forty two.
Motion to approve twenty twenty five dash forty two.
Our motion is second, our roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtland?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yeah.
Thompson? Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
Next.
This moves to resolution twenty twenty five dash forty three.
Twenty twenty five forty three is a baitment at fifty three thirty, in Cleveland Road, and that cost us three hundred dollars.
Motion to approve twenty twenty five dash forty three, put that amount there.
Second. Our motion is second, our roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtland?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
Yes.
This move to your resolution twenty twenty five dash forty four.
Now, this is a baiting weeds at fifty five fifty five Spanish Trace, and the amount is three hundred and eighty one dollars and twenty five cents.
Motion to approve twenty twenty five dash forty four.
Second, our roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Kurtland?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yeah.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor West?
Yes.
Yeah, this moves to resolution twenty twenty five dash forty five.
Now, this is an abatement at fifty five sixty Wood Creek Drive. Now, this is an abatement at fifty-five sixty, Wood Creek Drive, the amount is two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Motion to approve, so the resolution is fourteen twenty-five dash forty-five.
Second.
Motion second, have a roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Kurtman?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Witz?
Yeah. This means to resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-six.
Now, this is an abatement at fifty-nine oh four, Elizabeth Drive, and the amount, three hundred dollars.
I'm ready to say. Second.
Motion second, have a roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Kurtman?
Yes.
Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Witz?
Yeah.
Men.
This means us to resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven.
Now, this is an abatement at fifty-nine thirty-five Shane Circle in the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven. Thanks. Motion second, have a roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Kurtman?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Witz?
Yeah.
Men.
This means to resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight.
A resolution abating weeds on the property located at sixty-four sixty-seven Death Drive in the amount of two hundred and three dollars and thirteen cents.
And then also for resolution forty twenty-five dash forty-eight, I'd rather.
Second. Second, have a roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Kurtman?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Witz?
Yes. The last one. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine.
A resolution abating weeds at eighty seventy-four, with more land in the amount of two hundred and fifteen dollars.
I'm ready to approve twenty twenty-five forty-nine.
Second. Motion second, have a roll call.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Kurtman?
Yes.
Mr. Nail?
Yes.
Dr. Rush?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Witz?
Yes.
Men.
All the, thank y'all for bearing this on, that we, this stuff, and you should sort of float it down this time of year, so that next week they're ready to talk about it. Uh, kind of make the mayor council comment, uh, just to give everybody an idea of what the new, uh, football stadium looks like. We've got some, uh, green trees, uh, football stadium up here, you all look at it. That's about a twenty million dollar project, but a football build, building, built out, and then the school, uh, will be following that for about a hundred million dollars. So it's not a, still over a hundred and twenty million dollar project. Uh, I want to thank Dr. Rush and Ronnie Dixon for bringing that to Clay. If it wasn't for those two peoples, we would not have a Green Team. But thank y'all so much for, for what y'all done for Jefferson County, for bringing that to Clay. My goal, coming in as mayor, was to support, support our city. I think we've done that over the last thirteen years now. I think you can see a big difference in the city. We have the best administrators, Jefferson County has, I know you can probably about the last. I'm very proud of our schools. I've been to every football game for fourteen years. Actually, uh, I heard some comments on Facebook about running out with the team. Uh, I used to run out with the team. Till I found out that the coaches were dead, you know, who was going out. And when I found out that they had wagers on the running out with the team, I said, it's probably dead, if I stay on the side. So I'm very proud of our athletes, uh, not just football, but all our athletes in Clay. We had four next, four state championships from Clay. That's one of the reasons the people want to leave the Clay, is because we have a, a great, uh, a great style. I know that all the principals, I know all the teachers, uh, they do a great job, they work hard. They're looking out for our kids and trying to give them, trying to give the great stuff and all the things that we need to do. I know that's kind of why, I know it's them working hard to make that, so thank y'all for what y'all do, hard to board them. I appreciate you. Also, uh, the D Y S property, uh, there's been a lot of questions about the D Y S property. We're actually having a town hall meeting Tuesday, October seventh, uh, with our tech. We go over some of the master plan to try to get some ideas of what, uh, I'll, you know, lay out my master plan. I've had one in the boards for about thirteen years now. Uh, you don't know, uh, when I took office, Ronnie and I went to Montgomery several times and met with the D Y S, uh, forward. And asked them, the first thing we did was ask them, could we put a walking trail on the property? So it took us about two years to convince them to do that, permission for a walking trail. And indeed, once we jumped our foot in the door, we had a chance of either acquiring that property, buying it, or making some kind of arrangements to acquire that property. Uh, they actually put the property up for sale for about five years, I think it's like five years long. They never sold it, these, I think that's a good for Clay, if they didn't sell it and develop it into something else. Uh, so a few months ago, uh, Mr. Mr. Tomer's sale, uh, getting the agreement, the lease agreement, we went back and forth for several months. Uh, with things that we wanted in and things that they wanted in. Uh, we finally come up with a agreement that we could live with, a seven, five-year lease. Uh, we've actually already paid what they asked to, the money that they asked to lease that property, we've already paid that property in full for seventy dollars. So, uh, mine, every time I went to Montgomery, I told them that we wanted to make that property, it's something that Clay could be proud of. Uh, the buildings have been set, uh, since the twenty-eighteen. I mean, the longer they sit, the more advantage they're into the building. Uh, right now, they're pretty bad shape. Uh, we've had engineers out, architects out looking at it to see if they're salvageable. I would love to restore, uh, that sort of feeling in the works, to see if we can do that. Uh, I told them that I'd like to put a veterans' school, veterans' memorial park just inside the wall. Uh, these are just some of the years, this is just some of the ideas that I gave them, so they would know that we were serious about, you know, taking over the property. I told them that there was a cemetery on the property. Uh, people on the board didn't know that. Uh, they started doing the research, and, uh, we knew where the cemetery was about located, that with the tornadoes and the trees down and all, uh, it's sort of hard to know where it's at. So Ronnie's got our public works, uh, they've been working out there diligently, uh, cleaning up, clean cut grass that they do and everything else that they're doing. But we do have that cemetery, cleaning up now, uh, we do have a fence stand to protect it. We're going to fence the whole property, and we've started to fence around the front and down the sides. Uh, we've got a new day put up. It's going to take a little more time to get the property, whereas, sadly, there are people to go out on and just go walk. Uh, we got a grant from the state to extend our walking trail, it's actually on the property already. So, uh, we've got to, we've got the money, are able to extend the walking trail. And for the ones that haven't been out there, uh, hopefully down the road, we can help it up to let people go visit, but right now it's just too, it's not real safe to be walking around, uh, out in the property. So eventually, we will, it will be open to the public. Uh, so just bear with us on the cleanup, uh, once we did the cleanup done, there's actually a, a pond on that property also. Two years ago, when we dredged Coffee Lake, uh, we had to abandon our fish roe yard, and that was one of the things that I really enjoyed having was our fish roe yard. It caused the life of our fish. Uh, hopefully, if we can get that little pond in good shape, before we can actually stock it, maybe we can start back our fish roe yard. So there's a lot of things that we can do with that property, uh, I look forward to seeing, like, installing some property. I would love to raise City Hall down there and get it in the center of Clay, so, uh, that's something that we're just going to have to investigate and see what we can do. But the town hall meeting will be here. Six o'clock. Six o'clock on October seventh, so put that on your calendar. We will have architects here to start to take notes and start developing our master plan, so.
They'll also have the outline, the aerial shots, uh, if they've been working also, as well as to start the reading, so to bag it.
I'm going to set up a meeting, uh, and I'll send out an email to the city council. And the income is coming in to take a tour of that property, uh, within the next week or so. But we'll actually take a tour of that property before that meeting, so give y'all an idea of what, what, uh. So I'll, I'll be getting an email out to everybody that I've done. That's all I have, let's go to you, Mr. May.
I don't have anything, I have no idea, I've got to go.
Uh, this road has had an annual movement, uh, in the last two months, uh, badly sealed on, completely filled, and has not had a. Of the procedure.
Uh, it's not, it's not Clay, because we do support, uh, the barbecue shop, to just to, uh, put a little. Wash on the, 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 uh, there's a lot of rumors going, y'all, let's look at Facebook, and you believe everything on Facebook. I feel sorry for them, because during the election, uh, there was a lot of stuff posted on Facebook about Ronnie, about me, about the city council. It was not true. Main thing was saying that Ronnie's a dictator. That's, that's sort of, that's sort of, you know, standard for, for politics now, to call people names and y'all agree with it. And just saying that the city council, uh, we're working under a mayor council, former government, with a city manager. The city manager takes direction from myself or from the city council. If they have anything that they need to talk to Ronnie about, they have his cell number, they can call him and talk to him. Everything that Ronnie does, he does under my direction. I gave Ronnie a list about a month, a month ago. I said, if the election don't come out, if, I hope, that's, these are some of the things that I want to accomplish on my last eight months. I gave that list to Ronnie, and, uh, just like when I, when I took office, I gave Ronnie a list of my four-year. Is what I want to accomplish in my first four years as mayor. And about two years into being the mayor, Ronnie come to me and said, hey, have you got me another list? And I said, what are you talking about? He said, we've accomplished everything on your list, where do you want to start now? I said, I'll be choosing list. Ronnie has been the biggest asset, the city, of anybody here. Uh, he's a friend of mine, he does what I ask him to do, he keeps us out of trouble, he looks after all the city council. He does a great job. I'm so proud of Ronnie for what he has done for the city. And I know that y'all appreciate what he does, because he keeps y'all out of trouble. I know that, because Becky knows we're in trouble, it was for Ronnie. So I want, I just want to let everybody know, I love the city, I put thirteen years of my life in the city. For people to say things that are so hurtful to me, don't just hurt me, I, I can deal with it. May it hurt my wife, it hurts my family, and it hurts the city towers. It's just like the stuff that you talk about the school, and you talk about football team, and talk about the stuff that you don't have a clue about what you're talking about. You need to go get your back straight, or you're so close to stuff like that. I'm, I'm fed up, I'm still going to be here, I'm going to be here, I'm not going anywhere. I will be at every council meeting, and, and we will, we will be here, and we will make, we will keep Clay going in the. And my, my whole goal is, is to make Clay the best it can be. I'll look out for this community from the day I've been living this, in this town, in this community for seventy-two years now. And I care about this one thing, I don't plan on doing that. A lot of people need data Clay, a lot of my friends need data Clay, a lot of my friends have turned their backs on me. Because they're not liking Ronnie, or not thinking that we're doing the right thing, and that's sort of sad. It's sad, it hurts, it breaks my heart. But I do care about the city, and I care about the direction it was going. And I want to thank the city council, uh, we've got two more meetings to go, and, uh, I want to accomplish a few more things before I leave. But I want, I want to leave behind, uh, you know, a legacy of good things for Clay. I want to leave behind, uh, you know, what's the best for Clay. I've always looked out for everyone in Clay, your safety, health, and welfare, it's been my goal, in fact, a goal. And that's what I've tried to accomplish. And I want to thank city council we have now, uh, we've had several people in city council, and actually, I've pointed nearly every one of them. Uh, Becky, Becky and I go way back, we actually served on city council a lot, something. And thank you for your support. Thank you for what you've done, because now it's your honor, you can call, Dean, this time, what Dean served with Charles Hart, the first mayor. And I know.
He bailed.
Yeah.
He just bailed.
Don't, I, I love you.
That's a good show.
Thanks to Chris, thanks to Chris for your service. Uh, thanks to Chris. Thanks to Chris for your service. Uh, thank you Nathan for what you've done so far. I'm excited about what you can bring for the town. Uh, Dr. Rush, I can't say what can I say about you. Uh, you're funny. Uh, I think you have played it hard also. We're thankful for what you did so much. He was very smart. Uh, he's gonna, he's gonna be our next super kid. A post. But just want to tell y'all, I didn't care about the city. Uh, my heart's in this city. I live here just like you do. I pay the taxes just like you do. I pay the garbage tip up just like you do. But I know the things that hurt. Just like with the sales tax, when we reduced the two cent sales tax on groceries. The state actually called Ronnie and said, y'all can't do that. And then the state recommended something they needed to do it to. So they reduced the sales tax on groceries also, like a year later. But my goal is to look out for you, the citizens of Clay. I have no agenda. I have no agenda. I'm not taking a dime from this city. I've actually put more into it than probably I got out of it. I volunteered everything that I can actually donate to the city today. But just wanted to tell y'all, city council, thank you. Uh, Ronnie, thank you. Uh, we've had the best city council, uh, of any city you're ever I see a lot of cities that, uh, there's the council meetings inside around us. I don't think we've had one major disagreement. We disagree. But we agree to disagree and we move on and try to do what's best for the whole. Yeah, that's what's best for us. So thank y'all for your service. And, um, we still have a couple of meetings that I'm excited about. I wouldn't go out, uh, you know, being proud, we're being proud of this city. So thank y'all. Uh, Councilor Dean.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to expand on that too. As Mayor and I, we're both lame ducks. And I've been here before. I've been reelected a couple of times. We started in the spring of two thousand with an idea that if you want to, you want to pilot your own ship, you cannot continually grow in the, in the belly of somebody else's bag. And that's where we were with Jefferson County. And so we formed an incorporation committee in early spring of two thousand. And I think I literally wore out two pairs of shoes that summer. We hit every home in Steeple Chase where Dr. Rush lives. We hit Cosby Lake. We hit Clayton, we hit everybody. And I told this story until even I had no voice left. Dean, why do we want to be a city? Well, let me tell you. And then you can make your own rules and your regulations and, and you can do what you want to do. But lately, now that I'm getting older, uh, I remember as a little kid, when they crossed the Edmund Pettus Bridge and what a national tragedy that was. And they beat people back for wanting to go for their own freedom, their own rights. And I'll be honest with you, the discourse that I see now in America, we saw that week before last on a Wednesday with poor Charlie Kirk. Now our division is so great in this country that I see, and I'm a traveling salesman. I work for an overseas country, company that's in Denmark. And so I get to see a lot of countries. And I've never seen it so divided, whether you're Republican, Democrat, liberal, conservative, who cares? When I was a kid, you could argue and in Washington DC, they'd go to the Capitol Club, have a rib eye and a beer. Now the philosophy is, and I see it sadly on both sides. I want our side to win and I want you dead. My God, how did we get to this point? So I just want to leave that and, uh, you know, I don't know, with somebody's mind, Chris Horn, if you'll give us our monthly report from Center Point Park.
Thank you, Council. Sorry I had to run out, uh, Ms. Rush, a big ladder report. That was not a child. Or student. That was an adult that, uh, on kitchen fire that we had. We got it out pretty quick. So I get Dr. Rush a hard time on, uh, on our, um, on our, and during the summer, our kitchen fires, they're really, they're really high for some reason. I would ask her to go back and have them, or how to cook at school. So I'm proud to announce that it was adult this time, prime shot, uh, student. So as you see the report in front of you, we're at the top again. We're at eight hundred and ninety-eight halls for the month of August. Uh, we're currently, we have five vacancies. Uh, we have two, uh, individuals in recruits school in Vestavia Hills. Uh, they didn't get in our recruits school that we had. We hired them. Uh, they had to do some other things to pass and now they're in recruits school at Vestavia, doing well. Uh, I want to caution everybody, uh, if you see some photographers around Cosby Lake tomorrow around eleven, uh, AM. Uh, we made the, uh, our company that builds our fire trucks and bomb from, which is Sunbelt Fire, uh, which is in, um, in Vethmer and, um, down in Tampa area, they will be out in Cosby Lake, actually taking a picture. We're gonna make the calendar for the upcoming season with our new engine that we just purchased, that Top Hill Engine Five. So they'll actually be down there taking lots of pictures. Uh, you see some commotions going on. That's what that's gonna be down there for tomorrow about eleven. So, um, the, uh, right now, apologize, the fire chief is, uh, attending a class right now. We have started, uh, what we which was, uh, I saw a guy in the back of the room that had the, wore the shirts on, uh, with, uh, refreshed church. Uh, there's about forty members right now down there in the, in the classes, the DMA class. Uh, and what you don't, if you don't know what that is, when a tornado come through, when it comes through Clay a couple of years ago, uh, we call these men out and they can actually help us on the ground. Put boots on the ground to help us help get trees up, help mark, mark houses. If it's safe, go in or not go in. So they're in their training right now. Um, and so they'll be graduating at the end of August, I mean, October, excuse me, um, for, for that class and they're really into it. Also proud to announce it's a headache for me, but you know what? I get the job done. That's what I've been told. So we have seventy slots that we, um, that we have to fill for, for high school games, middle school games, JV games. We have two high schools in the fire district, Center Point and Clay. And we haven't missed one. We also thankful for you, you guys, uh, the council and the mayor there, they private school. It's holding at the park on Friday nights also. And we're also covering their game. Uh, so if they come to us, ask us to cover those games, we'll cover those games on top of our high school games also. Um, one last thing I have, Old Spring Road, I know everybody is, uh, over Old Spring Road. I will tell you that it is seamless with the fire district. Uh, we have, uh, we have automatic aid with Trustful Fire. Uh, we have not missed a beat on that. Nobody has been twenty, twenty-five minutes waiting on a piece of apparatus to get there. Automatic aid has been, uh, very well. We actually had a fire last Sunday, uh, on Timberly Loop. Uh, and they actually were there, uh, on top of us when our first engine got there. So, uh, we're working that very well, uh, and should have no problems, uh, until it gets done. I know there've been some delays. They, they discovered another water line down there. So it's gonna probably push it back a little bit more. They're in contact with us. I asked them to be in contact with us. Our staff meeting's on Tuesday to give us reports. They've done that every Tuesday. So, uh, they're, they're working there too. Mayor. One last thing, I just got, as I walked up here, I just received, cause I asked you and you just gave it to me. I just read an email from the about, there's a big ball game Thursday night. I don't know if y'all know that. It'll probably be the biggest crowd that Clay has ever had. And we are upstaffing for that. There are many times in high school. Uh, the weather is supposed to break. It's supposed to go early Thursday morning and be out of here by noon. So that means the folks are gonna turn out for the game. So, uh, we're gonna upstaff on that. And it's Thursday night, by the way. It's not Friday. So, uh, so it looks like we're gonna have a good turnout for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chris. That's all I've got, Mayor. How are you, Chris?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to really quickly, I know we're running long, but really go ahead and announce some grant winners for, for the month of August and September. Let everybody know it's a five hundred dollar grant that we, we give to a teacher. Uh, I'll look them over and I'll approve them. So, uh, for the month of August, Clay Elementary, um, gonna let Dr. Finkley deliver that grant. Uh, that's for the month of August. Brian Park, Danielle Smith, uh, will be receiving the grant there. Clay Chapel Middle, Betsy Jones and Fredericka Fortune will receive that grant. And then at Clay Chapel High School, uh, Emily Brown will, uh, she's a nurse there. She'll receive that grant of five hundred dollars. So anyway, I just wanted to get that. I'll have September. I have it caught up and I'll, I'll sit next to you. So anyway, thank you, Mayor. So I have. Thank you, Chris. Uh, yeah, for really talking with you.
Um, good evening, everyone. I just think that, um, we have a lot that is going on, a lot of exciting things that are going on. And I know that, um, just being a part of what the city of Clay is doing and what we're doing for all of our individual entities, our businesses, our, in our library, our schools, everything, I think it's moving in a positive direction. So I just want to say thank you and I hope that we can continue as a city to be able to keep this sport going. I know we don't agree with everything that is done, but, you know, we can agree to disagree in a, kind of, in a way that we can still get the job done and do what we need to do, that's necessary. Just laying the foundation for our future with our children and also making it the best place for us that we're going to be a part of. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. So a few short notes, uh, the fourteenth, I appreciate all of y'all that came out. We had, uh, Pastor Buckner, uh, Pastor Buck, uh, he came out and shorted from the E1, R1, uh, each one. Um, a public message and a public baptism back at, uh, Cosby Lake. Uh, they used to baptize people in the lake a hundred and twenty years ago. So it's kind of a return for that. So it was great. I appreciate all the council members and Mayor that were able to make it out to that. And, uh, really had a, really had a great time. He had a great message to share there. Uh, they do want to do that, uh, they do want to do that again. And, uh, we suggested we do the next one, so in November. Um, also, uh, so they, they really appreciate it. Uh, I know y'all had a lot of talk with Mayor, but, uh, they're real appreciative for letting us, letting them come out and, and do that and spread the word. Um, also I've been able to spend a little bit of time visiting the DYS property. Um, I see a lot of potential there. Uh, it's gonna take a lot of time and a lot of investment, get ready to use, but I think it's gonna be a great new property. Whatever, whatever society that I'm in. Thank y'all for all coming out today. I love to see it. Love to see a great guy out. Thank you, Nathan.
Uh, first to Mr. Fry, sixty-two, sixty-ten, very low. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kewen Tufai. I am a resident of Clay and I am a parent of Clay Chapel High School. And first, thank you to, for your service to the council and to the mayor. I'm here to provide feedback for myself, the parents that could not be here and for the players who participate in me, your strikeman at this moment. So this feedback is in response to the podcast comments from the Mary Lake, Jane Anderson. I am not sure if she's been attendance, but I would like to request that the council provide any comments to her. First impressions or best impressions. Mary Lake, your statements to Gary Lord on a podcast were less than impressive. Your intuitions were insulting to the Jefferson County Board of Education, the administrators and leadership at the five schools in the coaches there, the parents, and most of all, the most vulnerable population in the city, which is the children, our children. I would like to ask where your facts or impressions originated. Your responses to the questions and situations that student athletes, specifically the football players at Clay Chapel High School, were performing poorly. You provided generalized statistics. When I look at the test scores across the percentage of high schoolers not attending school on a regular basis, are we missing the mark? Where are the grades for those kids? How will football, being a success in your high school, want to serve you throughout the rest of your life? It is ironic that you could provide statistics from the library, which is important, but you have not, you did not have a full portfolio of academic performance of the high school athletes, specifically football, which you called out. As the mayor or interrepresentative seat for the citizens, you are charged to serve equitably and as informed council. Granted, you are not sworn in yet, which is the primary reason that your appearance may have served well after you had the opportunity to meet the principals, the coaches, and possibly some parents to obtain the facts and a better understanding of the current academic performance and how you and your city council could continue to support or better support the schools. While you may be in an exploratory phase, there were several different ways to address the conversation during a public and open discussion. I serve in a professional capacity that requires diplomatic responses. As a parent of one of the football players that holds a three point seven nine GPA and perfect attendance, I would appreciate a response simpler to, I don't know how I can support the schools. I am excited for the football team and other sports. I know that they are developing leadership skills such as dependability, teamwork, self-control, conflict resolution, and effective communication skills. After conversations with other parents, the majority of the players hold a three point oh or higher GPA. Unless they are sick, they are at school every day. So at this point, they are improving their attendance rate. I know this to be true of the baseball and basketball players as well, because my son has played those sports too. For your knowledge, every high school sport is governed by the Alabama High School Athletic Association. They provide governing guidelines for students to be eligible for participation in athletics. The philosophy is that extracurricular activities support the education project by supporting the development of the total child by creating a well-rounded citizen. Jefferson County Schools encourage participation by all students in appropriate extracurricular activities. As parents, we hold our student, our student athletes to be just that, students first. They are supported to attend college, to obtain, obtain certifications in trade skills and to set goals and to work for them. Most of all, to be respectable, self-supported citizens. We're not happy with the negative impression that you cast on the football players specifically. We would appreciate an apology to them for your remarks. It is our preference to have a leader that is a solution, that is a solution center and celebrates the wins of the students, academic and extracurricular activities. I hope this feedback will guide your future responses and interactions with the families in the community. We would also like to invite you to a football game before November third to see how the community supports you. As the fire chief said, there's a big game Thursday. Thank you all and go Coop.
Vienna, hundred fifty-seven, forty-eight, DeSoto Drive. Once again, uh, I'm just, I'm concerned about my neighborhood. I mean, we've got, well, right now on, uh, Title Loop Road, and I believe it's the corner of Hickory and Title, right across where King's TV. Have you seen it? Oh, my gosh.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
You both had to clean that up.
Okay, great. Because also Kings Road, their little pile's been there for a while too.
And that's, you know, I'm in corporate.
I know, but you can't do anything.
We're working in a man.
Okay.
We not had to do it. I'm playing.
No, 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 because I, down the end of my street, it turns into Penson. And there's a curb and the neighbor across the street started dumping stuff. And the growth from the woods is coming out in the street. So I took pictures and I sent it to Penson and he got back with me and he said, that's unincorporated. But I contacted Jefferson County and they picked up the garbage, but they haven't come out and cut it back yet. So I know unincorporated does pick up stuff.
Where, where did you contact?
I didn't know if you were aware of, because I know it just happened in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, I drive the bus about here every day.
Do you? Also in my neighborhood, Paradise Village, there's a house that's sitting on the corner on, at Eden Drive, the four-way. And I, and I don't think they've got garbage pickup because I never see a garbage can. But all of a sudden, a bunch of debris, bushes, somebody cut limbs off and set it up against the fence there. It's been there for well over a month now. I'm dead. And I'm just wondering, you know, what are you worried about people dumping things that we don't have to look at? I mean, if everybody dumps and we can't, now I know Matt Clay, he, he drags things. Yeah, you know, yeah. There's one spot there and he would drag it down to his house for the garbage pickup. And that's about the only recourse we have. Then there's that empty house on, um, Eden Drive where somebody comes to mow the yard and they've started a pile. First it was dead grass clippings and now it's limbs. And, you know, it's just gonna get worse and worse.
You said it's now, give it that, and you put the fire on fire, fire it out and let it shake it out. You're putting on this corporate dance. They have garbage pickup. They actually have debris pickup, so.
Well, that's what I was saying. There's, there's not a garbage can there. So I don't believe those people where these things were dumped has garbage pickup, because there's no garbage cans. And then the other area where they're doing the grass and the limb pile, that's an empty house. It was abandoned a couple of years ago and somebody just shows up every now and then to mow the yard. And were the black trucks still sitting there on that hill?
Good evening, fellow citizens, Mayor Webster, Mr. Dixon, members of the council. My name is Drew Weaver. Um, I'm a husband and a father of four young boys that we homeschool. For the last five years, I have worked here in Clay as an associate pastor and I've been a resident of Clay for the past nine plus years. I was present for the final meeting of library board on July twenty third, twenty twenty four, just prior to the decision of this very council to withdraw from the APLS and eventually to dissolve the library board with the passing of ordinance twenty twenty four zero three on August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Although I may disagree, I can at least understand the decision of this council to withdraw from the APLS. That said, however, I do not understand why Mr. Dixon introduced the ordinance to dissolve the library board at the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four meeting of the city council, nor why this council subsequently approved that ordinance and dissolved the library board shortly thereafter. Now, after dissolving the library board in August of twenty twenty four and after thirteen months of inaction by this council concerning the board or committee to oversee the library, this council has seemingly reversed course and voted to establish a library committee, which is simply a library board by another name with the passing of resolution twenty twenty five forty one earlier this evening. It seems rather strange and inconsistent for this council to suddenly decide to undo their previous decision, a decision that was actually praised by Mayor Webster during the candidates forum hosted by the Trustville Tribune earlier this year and reinstate a new committee to oversee the library, which, by the way, was one of Mayor-elect Jane Anderson's promises throughout the course of her campaign. In light of these oddities, I have the following questions for the council this evening. Though it doesn't actually matter at this point, because I was denied my request for comment prior to the vote. So I will simply state this question for the record. If a library committee is something that is good for the city, why did this very council approve the dissolution of the previous library board with the passing of ordinance twenty twenty four zero three in August of last year? Why has the council declined to appoint a library committee for the last thirteen months? And why is this council now deciding to establish a new library committee with resolution twenty twenty five forty one, less than two months before an incoming mayor and city council are set to take office? As elected officials, you are subject to the scrutiny of your citizens. I'll speak simply for myself, but I don't think I'd be speaking out of turn or that anyone would disagree with this sentiment. But citizens who take of their time to attend, attend city council meetings such as this one, do so not because they're interested in hearing your commentary on the state of politics and our culture or your love for the city. No, citizens who take of their time to attend these meetings do so for the purpose of being aware of what their city is doing and to hold their elected officials accountable for their actions. Mr. Mayor, you said that you felt sorry for those who believe what they read on Facebook. Perhaps the reason citizens of Clay resort to Facebook to get information about the city is because they're not allowed to make comments about the actions of the city, nor ask questions of their elected officials concerning those actions. I think it is incumbent upon this governing body to answer for these inconsistencies and to answer for the arbitrary nature with which decides which actions of this city will be open to will not. Afterwards, which they will decide to disclose to the citizens and which they will not. Thank you very much. That was dummy. And I don't appreciate you stating that for the record.
So the reason that we got rid of the library board was because, basically this little reason right here, I was actually a lady from, the Eagle Falls, responsible for here tonight, with grants and issues about the APLS. And as you know,
We withdrew from the APLS in July of twenty twenty four and then you, and then you dissolved. Sir, I, I'm not allowed to make comments about your statements, but you should not be allowed to make comments about mine.
Good evening. My name is Dale Gerhard, one point five Clean Lakes Road. Uh, we call it the land of Clay for God because it has the trust of the code. So we don't ever see him. First thing I'd like to talk about is the ad valorem tax rescension. And I just want to state, Mayor, that your explanation is basically lipstick on a pig. The five mil ad valorem tax was originally established in twenty fourteen to support city schools and public safety, particularly when the city was exploring funding its own police force. In your comments, you said that you enacted the five mil ad valorem tax and then later found out you couldn't afford it. So why did you enact a tax for something that you didn't even know if you could afford? The fact is, you did know you couldn't afford it, because Penson had already gone through the exact same exercise. And they knew they couldn't afford it and their tax base is much larger. Citizens believed it was for a good cause, even though the administration knew at the time the plan was not fiscally sound. In twenty fifteen, the earmarks were removed so the city could still collect revenue, but it would flow into the general fund with no restrictions. It was a classic shell game. If the goal was generally to save taxpayers money, this could have easily been done at any point over the last ten years. When you realized in twenty fourteen that you couldn't afford the police force, you could have rescinded it then. Now, in the final days of your, of the outgoing administration, you're creating the appearance of saving money while actually reducing the general fund and putting an incoming mayor into a difficult position intentionally. These are gains, plain and simple, political maneuvers designed to complicate the transition and shake the narrative. The community sees what you're doing and we are watching. On the topic of the library, last year, the library board was dissolved because the city manager and mayor didn't want to share control. It was not about APLS. It was not about the board. It was about control. The administration has denied that, but anyone who attended those meetings saw him act in ways that made it clear that the decision was about the control, not the library's. That became a campaign issue and the voters spoke loud and clear. They wanted new leadership. Now, in the final days of your end up administration, we see a new library committee being pushed through. If a committee is truly needed, that decision belongs to the incoming council, chosen by the people, not an outgoing administration trying to snip control along the way out. This isn't about boards or committees. It's about respect. If you truly love Clay, respect the voters, respect the process, let the leadership lead and stop trying to lock in control in the eleventh hour. One final comment that I wasn't going to make, but I, but I will now. You made a statement about how people saying things on Facebook not only hurt you, but hurt your wife. Well, let me tell you something. You hurt my wife. You and Ronnie Dixon berated her and humiliated her in a very public way, which was, should have been an employee, yes, you did. Don't shake your head, because several people there have come to me and said they were shocked with the way y'all act. And then following that meeting, I was at the next meeting where you made derogatory comments about her, not realizing that I was recording the whole conversation. You should be ashamed of the way you act towards her. That never should have happened in a public, in a public venue. That was a private meeting that you should have had with an employee. Some of the things may have been true, but a lot of them were not. There was a lot of lies. There was half fruits and some fruits that should have been dealt with differently. So when you say that it upset you because people hurt your wife, I know exactly how that feels. You should be ashamed.
I'm just going to let you know this, because yesterday that I started having thirteen years' gap would not be a tradition to call that to that person. So I know Ronnie has made arrangements to have it that be. I wish y'all the best today.
Okay, well, uh, for those, uh, that don't know me, I am Monica Robinson. I live at fifty seven eighteen Bank Creek Drive. Uh, I'm a part of the president for We are like someone else, because most of our people go to Penson schools. And we're at the tail end of Clay on, uh, Clay Palmedale Road. I am a veteran, um, and so I want to make it clear that as a veteran, our oath never expires. So therefore, uh, comments were made about, uh, the state of affairs. Our oath never expires. So we, you know, support the constitution. Uh, we defend it against all enemies foreign and domestic. So I just want to leave that there. Uh, so, uh, my question is concerning the, uh, planning, uh, for the, um, the Veterans Day, uh, program on November eleventh. Uh, as the mayor stated, it will be at the community center this year. Um, there are flyers, uh, on the table and, uh, please RSVP by the third of November to Pam. Uh, her phone number, well, the phone number for the city council and her app email address is on the flyer. My husband, who is also a veteran, I'm retired lieutenant colonel. He's a retired CW four warrant officer. Uh, we will be providing the decorations, uh, and we will also provide donate, um, some souvenir gifts, gift bags for all the veterans and participants, uh, at the event. Um, so.
And as every patient have already been sent out, it's hard for one to, or the one who came last year, so they have already been sent out.
Okay.
And they would take the, if they'll just call city hall, it's probably gonna be a head count.
Okay, that, that's great, because, um, it, the, the space is limited. Uh, the number of tables, uh, support eight people. So, um, I, I hope we have a great turnout for all the veterans that will, uh, participate, uh, in, in this event. I'm fairly new to the community. We moved here in twenty nineteen, but this will be my first, uh, event that I'll be able to attend. And my husband and I are looking forward to supporting it. Uh, on that note, since the next, uh, city council meeting isn't until the seventh of October, uh, for those that are football fans, college football, that is, um, UAB, the Blazers are playing the Army on the fourth. And so if you go out to the UAB site, uh, they're selling, uh, family packed tickets. It's a day of service. That's why I'm bringing it up, uh, for those who want to attend. There are forty dollar tickets for, um, uh, families, a family of four. Uh, fairly cheap, but go out and support the, the, the Army and the Blazers, because my daughter graduated from there. So, uh, so it's definitely a house divided, just like when Georgia plays Alabama. I'm from Georgia and my husband's from Alabama. So, but, uh, to end on a positive note, um, folks, we all are members of this city. And so we are all going to come together regardless of who is sitting at this table. Uh, so, um, I just pray that, uh, as we start settling in, we, we take, you know, I, I say oath, but we take, um, pleasure and supporting one another. Um, I was listening to the young man, the gentleman that came up and was talking about his property. We're all neighbors. So as neighbors, we gotta watch out for one another. I say this to the folks that are in my community. So if you see somebody in need, help them out. Be kind. You know, we can't afford in this day and time to be nasty, mean, hateful. So watch your words. Just be kind to one another. Be neighborly. We all talk about Christian values or whatever religion you may practice. Practice it. Show it. So let's leave on a positive note, because there's a lot of tension that was going on in this room tonight. So, uh, let's leave on a positive note. So Mayor, I turn it back over to you.
You know, I haven't been a traveling salesman for forty two years. I love the microphone and captive audience. And right now I have, uh, just for a few minutes more, to talk about Clay a little bit further. There's a city that I will not mention their name. They have not had a new housing start or, or, or ground broken for a new home in over six years. And we all know the city. There's another city very close to us who shall go bang us that after two audits last year, one audit said you're a hundred and fifty five million dollars in debt. The other one said you're a little over two hundred million. So I feel like we pilot the discourse since two thousand pretty well. As the last before, we had like thirteen, twelve, thirteen million in the bank. We have forty eight homes under construction of some form, and I think we didn't leave it too badly. When you compare it to the other two, we're not way over our heads in debt and people are still willing to come here. And thank you, Monica, for that. Again, I keep thinking about Charlie Burke. I was in Memphis when I heard that news. And it's like, we don't want to talk to you anymore. We want to use the thirty dollar seats and take your life. My God, let's never get that contentious. Never in the city of Clay. That's all I want to say.
I forgot to y'all my hat I got this weekend. I said, I found, I saw the hat and I said that I've got to have it. Actually, my name is Charles. Thank y'all for coming. I will be praying for the administration coming. I think it's just appropriate that we all pray for our city in our, so, uh, thank you all for coming tonight. Remember the council meeting in October seventh here at six o'clock. And then our next city council meeting will be October fourteenth here at six o'clock. The rest of our meetings will be at city hall. We're done with the library. We got our other things booked here. Right from here on out. So I'll be praying a bunch.
Push it through that second.
We are here. Thank y'all.